This is one of the latest agendas.
I don't see that. Between the two of you, you guys are both just thinks this meeting is gonna be a four hour.
Open. It locks. Thank you. John, when you speak, you'll have to speak into the microphone so they can hear you. You can take it to your seat if you like.
Well, gentlemen, I have seven o'clock on my cell phone, so we're gonna roll.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I would like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to our township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly during the meeting, but those present online, only one person speaks at a time. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to utilize the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you must either be a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner in East Hemphill Township who wants to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order, and your microphone will be muted without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call vote to ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later meeting. Essential township public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for the meeting minutes purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comments limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of the public comments at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. We thank you for your patience, and now we will proceed to our first agenda item. Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Now the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it.
We have a really well-attended meeting tonight. So, our first action tonight is actually to introduce our new chief fire official whose first day of employment is March 1st. And I'd like to turn this over to our township manager, Ms. Schweitzer.
So, Scott asked me to put together a short summary of how we got here, which I've done. This all started about 10 years ago, 10 years plus, when we discussing the future of fire services in East Hemphill Township. In 2018, we commissioned Rob Brady of Rob Consulting to prepare a strategic plan for us covering Roystown and Hemphill and East Petersburg fire companies. That strategic plan was completed in March of 2019. He did extensive interviews and meetings of the three departments, Roystown, Hemphill, and East Petersburg. And it was already received when we were presented it in March by all departments as well as both municipalities, East Hemphill and East Petersburg. He included a task on his implementation schedule. The first two tasks have been completed. The first task was completed in 2020. We created the Hemphill Fire Services Commission in May of 2020. Their first meeting was in July. The commission is comprised of elected officials and representatives from each of the fire companies, and their first directive was to oversee the hiring of a chief fire official. Moving ahead to current times, we'd like to introduce John Kotmeyer. He was hired March 1st as the chief fire official representing the Hemphill Fire Services Commission. Briefly, John came to us with an extensive training and knowledge in fire and EMS operations. He is their retired deputy fire chief from the city of York. He worked for Wellspan as their EMS manager, assisting them in training and delivery of the EMS services. More recently, he worked for Gladfelter Insurance as their senior risk control consultant. And finally, before coming here, he was the director of training for VFIS, which stands for Volunteer Fireman's Insurance Services, which is a division of Gladfelter. So hopefully you can all welcome John Kotmeyer. He's in the audience this evening, and I'm sure he has something that he'd like to add.
John, welcome to our township, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'll just stand up if that's okay.
Yeah, John, if you could maybe, I'm not sure where the room, there you go. So if you speak, it should pick you up. Perfect.
Very good. Well, again, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm very excited to be here. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. As I said before, and I spoke during the interview process, I'm excited about this, but I don't want this all to be about me. One of the things that I said during the interview process is I commend all of you for having the foresight to look into this, follow the survey, follow the study, and begin to fulfill those kind of commitments. Fire service is one of those things throughout the United States. We're seeing a decline in volunteerism. Retention of volunteers is very important, and that's one of the things that, again, that I'll be tasked with and will definitely look into with all the departments. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I am excited to be here, and again, if you have any questions for me, I would certainly entertain.
I think I'd first like to see if Mr. Wigglesworth or Mr. LaFever have anything they would like to add since they were part of this group that helped form and get this point where we're at right now where we're, we hired you. So if you guys have anything you would like to add?
I'll go first. I think it's a great opportunity. It's been a long time coming. We have a good opportunity with John here. I think he was well-received at the fire commission this last week. And going forward, I just think the sky's the limit on bringing the other departments closer together, being a more unified team. And the chief, the number one concern that I think that we all share is maintaining the volunteer model for as long as possible. And I think everybody's committed to that.
No sense saying all that again, except that I would add that this is a significant milestone, and I would venture to say the most significant that this commission will endeavor, and we look forward to great things.
Probably what I will just add too is this township is known for being frugal but not willing to spend money or things that we consider to be important. And obviously, by creating a full-time, new, full-time position from scratch, elevates our fire services and takes us to the next level of what we gotta do to try and continue the volunteer model as long as possible. So I'm excited with welcoming you on board, and I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to add, but...
John, just like to welcome you to the Hemphill area and Hemphill community. We appreciate the good work you're gonna be doing for us. I think I would be remiss if I didn't, we didn't commend Mr. Wigglesworth and Mr. LaFever in the efforts that they've made on this fire commission. I'd also want to add Mrs. Schweitzer and Diane Garber, who have done a great job in terms of shepherding this project along. The East Hemphill community and East Petersburg borough can be proud of the work that's gone into this, and we're looking forward to a lot of success. We know it's a big challenge, but we believe you're up to it. So again, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
I don't think I can add anything to that, but welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you all. So thank you and welcome on board. We appreciate having you here and look forward to the good things that are gonna come. So thank you. Thank you.
So next, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. So with that, I will open up the consent agenda. Any comments at this point? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever. Ms. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye. The ayes have it five to nothing. Next, we move on to our action items. For the third meeting in a row, we have no developer services. So we have no land development items to talk about, which, for the record, has not occurred like this since 2010. That's the longest period where we've gone three meetings without having any land development services. I hope we don't have a repeat of 2010, though. That did not end up being a good year. So it would be nice to see some activity at this point, but it doesn't hurt to slow down a little bit, too. So with that, we will move on to item B of our action items, which is the 2021 paving bid results and award. Ms. Schweitzer, I'll probably start off with you first, and then if Mr. Madonna has anything to add.
So when you're packet this evening, you did have the bid results from the bid opening. We actually had, according to Perry, quite a few bidders on this. We usually have maybe two or three at a time, and we had one, two, three, four, five, seven. So the little bidder for the in-place paving was Pennsy Supply of Harrisburg at $1,042,865.03. We also bid paving materials. That little bidder is Highway Materials of Flower Town at $43,470,000, both of which combined together fall within our budget for 2021.
Actually, to be more specific, we're $70,000 under budget, I think. We had 1.15 million originally budgeted for paving, so this is a good number.
1.05.
Was it 1.05?
Yeah.
It burst in my bubble.
Sorry. But we are under.
So we're still good. So Mr. Madonna, do you have anything you would say?
I do not. The numbers kind of speak for themselves. It looks like there were some, everybody must have been chomping at the bit to get some work this year. That's why we had so many bidders. Again, we are under budget on both bid numbers, so that would be great if you would approve this and we could get it started.
Would there be any advantage for $1,330 to award materials to Highway or to Penn Supply, Pennsy Supply?
That's a little misleading. The Flower Town is the home base of highway materials. They both are right over Off Route 72.
Okay.
So, and you know, it's a matter of five minutes one way or the other way, so I would stick with the lower bid.
I think we're obligated with the lower bid, too. What's interesting, though, what's interesting is the $6,000 difference between our two major competitors, which being Alan Myers and Pennsy. New Enterprise actually came in pretty high. So it's actually really good numbers.
Yes, it's actually lower. The per ton numbers were very low, much lower than last year, so we did really well.
Any comments to the board at this point?
With the rising prices on fossil fuel and components, we'll get it locked in now.
You're saying that this is the cheapest we're gonna see the next four years. I would kind of concur.
I think so, yes. I would suspect.
I feel that's one of the few things I think we could put a definite crystal ball prediction on. Okay, so with that, and seeing nobody from the audience at this point, so I will entertain a motion to award a 2021 paving in-place contract to Pennsy Supply Incorporated for $1,042,865.03 and to award the 2021 paving material contract, the highway materials incorporated, for $43,470. Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye. The ayes have it five to nothing. There you go, Mr. Madonna.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have the adjustment to billing East Pea Borough regarding the Hemphill Area Fire Services Commission in the 2021 Township Budget for Services. Ms. Schweitzer.
So we hired the chief fire official in March of this year, of course, which is basically three months into the quarter. The agreement we have with East Pete Borough is that they pay 20% of budgeted costs. So we provided them a budget last September, October, which is reflected in the spreadsheet that you have before you. Their payment on a quarterly basis would have been $8,659. The Borough Council came back to us and requested that we reconsider our first quarter number to one-third, since that's the time period that John has been hired, changing that number to $2,886, and then maintain the second, third, and fourth quarter at the 8659. This was reviewed by the Public Safety Group as well as the Admin Finance Group, and the consensus is that this seems like a reasonable option and would be, should be considered. But it does need board action since it is an agreement.
Okay, any discussion in the board, go to the Fire Services Committee first.
I think Cindy summed it up pretty good.
Mr. Bennett?
As we discussed, I'm good with it.
So with that, is there any other board discussion? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment? Okay, again, seeing none. So we had a good explanation there, pretty obvious reasons why they made the request, and it seems pretty reasonable. So I'll entertain a motion to adjust the first quarter invoicing amount for East Pete Borough from $8,659 to $2,886 per the request and adjustments to the fire chief, the fire chief fire officials hiring timeline. Is there a motion? Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye. The ayes have it five to nothing. Okay, next up, we have the Church Street resident curb sidewalk cost and level of funding assistance to property owners from the township related to the additional PennDOT expenses. Ms. Schweitzer.
So last meeting, I did present this to you as part of my manager's report and said there was no action necessary, and we really don't have to take action this evening as well if you're not prepared to do so. But what this shows is the group of residents that live on Church Street that require sidewalk and curbing to be replaced based on the PennDOT resurfacing project on Church. The first number in the spreadsheet reflects the prevailing wage rate, which is what PennDOT's going to be bidding out. The second one is the private contractor rate, which, if a resident went out and did it themselves, that they would probably pay. And then the third column is the difference between the two. It's important to note that these are only estimates. So if you would move forward and take action, it would be the concept of the prevailing wage rate minus the private contractor rate would be the amount that the township would be willing to extend to the residents, property owners.
So, and just so we're clear, the residents aren't able to do this on their own in private contract.
They are able to do it on their own, but it would require a highway occupancy permit from each property owner, and...
In that sense, they're prohibited because it's too difficult for them individually to get through PennDOT. If, like I was telling my wife tonight, actually, we were talking about this very thing. We have a number of places that have sidewalk on state roads, but most of them have a nice grass strip. They can go in there with their own contractor, do the work. They don't have to do anything with the state. Here, we're talking about roads that got less than 12 feet from this double yellow line to the curb line and then neatly sidewalk. And so for them to do any work, the contractor's basically closing down a lane in PennDOT. Therefore, you gotta reach out to PennDOT and get PennDOT approval. They put the homeowner through a rather extensive highway occupancy permit process, which that in itself is thousands of dollars for that homeowner to try and do that, let alone taking on the cost of replacing the sidewalk and doing the curb repair that they gotta do.
So there is, in terms of the timing on this also, is the PennDOT plans to bid this in January of next year. But it would be nice for the residents to be aware, the property owners to be aware of how much that they can count on the township for covering.
And this was also attended by almost every, pretty much every resident now has had a conversation with, and the churches and the businesses have all had a conversation either one-on-one or in our two public, or two meetings with the residents.
There are some that weren't face-to-face. All of them got at least three letters from the township office explaining and providing the information. So the one I have not heard from is Turkey Hill and the beverage distributor, but they all got the information. We gave them...
There's really no action to take other than just acknowledgement that, I mean, is there any at this point from the board, just kind of pulling the board, any issues about going down this road? We have a policy in the township that the curb and sidewalk is the homeowner's responsibility. We're not violating that policy, at least in my opinion, we're not. This is a unique situation where that homeowner and business is still gonna be responsible for their maintenance obligations. We're just helping them with the PennDOT part.
When we get closer to it, the mechanics of how and to whom we pay the difference can be worked out.
Yeah, I've explained to the residents that they probably will not get a bill from the township until probably fall, maybe winter of 2022.
PennDOT bill them?
No, PennDOT will bill township.
Okay.
Yeah, PennDOT will not deal with individual property owners. They'll leave that to us.
But they aren't very productive in their invoicing either, PennDOT.
Any concerns at this point? I don't think we're establishing a precedent because this is, I can't really think of any other place in the township that has this situation. There might be, I'm sure, probably maybe in Roystown, there might be a place or two where there would be a similar situation, but most of Landisville, it's not that situation. So Roystown and other places, we're not dealing with this issue.
Do we have a good plan?
Okay, this is, does Mr. LaFever, you might get your wish, any old business at this point? Okay, seeing none, any new business? Seeing none, manager's report. Now, Ms. Schweitzer, I will warn you, we were kind of looking to have this be like our first meeting of the year normally, or we have it done in 30 minutes or less for our meeting, so please plan accordingly with your report.
So jumping down, there's not a whole lot happening with the roads. They're just starting up with the spring thaw. Looking at the central Lancaster County cog, I did provide the minutes from the last meeting, and if you look at the very end, there was discussion about dissolving that cog because Manheim and now East Hemphill have joined the LIMC cog. I believe East Pete is still currently on the fence in terms of joining or not joining. But that question will come up, so I'm sure that the representatives that go to those cog meetings will, it would be helpful to know what the board supervisors desires. Now, they're not meeting until the end of March, so there is plenty of time, but I just wanted to put this before you so that you're aware of it. The other thing, the planning groups, you have my reports on that. There was discussion of potential change to the enterprise zone to allow for retail commercial component that is accessory to the menus. We also discussed the Swarun Trail extension, which is really a lot of concept at this point, and also the Coffman, Stony Battery, and Nolte Trail extension. I don't know, Diane, if you can pull that up. Wake up. It's a very good graphic that Scott Hayne and his office put together that shows how that trail is gonna come together. It starts basically at Lynx, well, it's going the other way. It starts at Coffman, runs along Stony Battery, comes up Nolte, and then the plan is to paint lines on the road, at the railroad tracks, and then up Lynx. The three warehouses, and correct me if I'm doing this wrong here, John. The three warehouses we currently have deferments on for sidewalk or trail. So we're gonna call those deferments. And there's also a new warehouse at the corner of Stony and Nolte on the other corner that we can call a deferment in, which will hopefully fund the storage area closer to Coffman because we don't have deferment of sidewalk on there. We do?
We do have a deferment for the self-storage facility. We just do not have any means to call in a deferment or anything for the property that's Tyco Electronics or Tyco.
So there's a short stretch where we're gonna get some additional monies that are gonna be given to us because of the waiver of the requirement along Nolte for the newest of the facilities, and those monies can go to cover that. Basically, you can see the driveway of Tyco and the storage area, which is the white area. That little stretch right there is the stretch that John's talking about. And yeah, your change, when we met, talking with Scott Haynes, Coffman Road and Stony Battery, there's really no way to get a crossing across there. If you guys remember, that stop bar is right up against the white, or the double, or not the double yellow, the white shoulder line because of some sight distance issues with the shed there. And the rules are your crosswalk is always in front of a stop bar, and that crosswalk basically would be actually in Stony Battery, or we'd have to address some other issues. So what we do is that old Stony Battery, whatever that little leg of the road is, I have no idea what its name is. That trail would continue down that road, which doesn't have high traffic, and there would be a crossing right where John has the mouse right now, or where Diane has the mouse to Coffman in the handicap ramp there, and technically, that's an intersection. And technically, that's an intersection. So a crosswalk there, a new handicap ramp would be about anything, it would need to be constructed. And we had to avoid the, the problem area at Kaufman and Stony Battery. So I think it's a pretty good design, gets us pretty well connected with the danger area, which is along Stony Battery. Takes advantage of our more lightly-traveled streets where we don't need sidewalk and it gives us a pretty good connection to school district.
Any thought on going towards the school on Kaufman then with it at some point?
Well, there's a sidewalk on Kaufman all the way to the railroad tracks. And then the rest of it would be up to what the school wants to do, because it's a school property.
It's on the north side, right?
Yeah.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk goes all the way up to the rail tracks that's, that was put in by that developer. So the, the, after that, it's really up to what the school district wants to do. We're, we're getting them to the school property, but then the school can, at that point, can kind of figure out how they want the circulation right now.
Have we had any conversation with the school district at all on that?
We have not. I do know that they're talking about school zone lights on that roadway, which will help. But no, we have not talked to them about sidewalk yet.
I'm sure if that's a suggestion, we probably could talk to them about it.
On the list, yeah.
Way, way ahead at this point. They do have a pretty good trail network. It doesn't go all the way up to the railroad tracks. But given that that's developments there, it kind of would make sense for them to have that in their plan to connect to the development on Kaufman.
So Scott, if I understand correctly, you're saying that they, the crosswalk over Kaufman can't go, it, it's got to go back west and then north?
It's got to go back off of the, the road that does have no name instead of Stony Battery. And the road's right in front of Tyco.
Well, no, I like it going there. I'm just wondering, can it go, can there be a crosswalk at that intersection there?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, there'd be a crosswalk and a handicap ramp across the street. We'd have to put the handicap ramp in that would then tie right into the sidewalk.
It'll be down at Kaufman.
Right, right there.
Would be the crosswalk and then there'd be a handicap ramp to get onto the sidewalk.
Okay, great.
And that's, you can't have a crosswalk that ends at a shoulder and not a sidewalk. So the, the, the road has no name would basically have the, the crosswalk would come across. There'd be that detectable warning surface and then it's just walking along the side of the road there for that stretch in front of Tyco. We could even stripe it out if we wanted to, like a little, a four-foot thing. It's, we figured, what was it, 16 or 18 foot wide is, is the width of that road right now? Something along there?
Yes, sir.
So there's more, more to follow. It's just, it's just a concept plan at this point.
Yeah, we're working through the process. Public Safety, Matt, you have my, the report there from, from their meeting. John Kotmeyer was present, so he'll start attending those. We did talk about the police annual report, which was submitted by Chief Skiles. The accreditation process is moving along for him. He said his new officer is fitting in nicely. And just to note, the body camera purchase that he had wanted to do earlier this year. He's still waiting for the DCE grant announcement before he can make that purchase. And also an update on the Hemfield Fire Engine Replacement Project. At the request of Hemfield Fire, they asked us to help put that on hold. They're, they're reviewing their options. John's going to probably be working with them as well to, to help them through that process. So that hasn't been moving forward yet.
I think probably, well, we got, taking a step back in the planning group. The other thing was just to explain what's occurring at the enterprise zone. We had two nonprofits reach out to us about incorporating with their warehousing a front store. If you guys are aware of Habitat for Humanities, a reuse store in Greenfield. They are out of space and they're looking for a larger facility. And so they're interested in moving to East Hemfield Township. They would like to open up their reuse store. Most of their property is used for warehousing and it's materials for their, their building. But the reuse store is part of their business model and it's actually one of their fundraising tools. We do not allow that in our industrial zone. It's actually very common in other industrial zones, not as a principal use, which then it would, that would be commercial. But Harley Davidson and others in York do something similar. And up in, I was telling you, East Kukaliko, up at the Pepperidge Farm Plant, they have a small store that they have in their plant too, that they open on Saturday for Saturday sales to residents. So the, that detail's being worked out. Just wanted to put that on everybody's radar screen that we've been approached about that. The second one was actually a kind of a food bank arrangement, but they wholesale. And wholesaling is actually permitted to occur in our industrial zone. So that, that issue got resolved with our meeting. So, but there's a group that's looking to, to purchase property or enterprise zone up in East Pete area. They run a, a distribution service for food banks and they wholesale their products to other food banks across the, the region. So that would be actually compliant with our, with our zoning ordinance right now. So really, it's just this one, the one concept about allowing, as an accessory use, some commercial primarily servicing what that facility is producing. But it won't open up our enterprise zone to like a Walmart or something moving in. This is purely, industrial needs to be the primary use. So a lot more to follow on that. But that was just a, just a little concept that the, the planning group was talking about to get it on everybody's radar screen. And it was just talked about in concept only right now.
Mr. Beck wanted to brief you also on the very new material that we got from the conditional use and special exception process.
Staff met with Nick Ebersol and Scott Hayne from DMA on Tuesday and went over their initial draft. We had some good discussions. They're going to take back and revise their draft and we hope to have that to the planning group in the beginning of April.
Anything else on development services?
No, sir.
Okay. Any discussion on the manager's report? I apologize, we're five minutes over. Okay, we'll open this up to public comment. We read the rules for public comment. Is there anybody, Ms. Garber, that's interested in public comment? I'm seeing a shaking head, no?
No one.
Any more, any more discussion of the board at this point?
Scott, did you want to give a quick rundown on the sign ordinance? Or you want, Scott Hayne? I don't think you can hear me.
Sure.
Okay.
I was, I was just unmuted. We, as John said, we are working through on the conditional use changes that you had requested. And that's sort of our top priority. We met with staff and we have a pretty good handle on that. And I believe we'll be able to deliver next week a, a full draft document that shows the changes that, that we're looking at. There are going to be some options in that, that we're going to be putting back to you. So that's the one thing we're working on. We've met with, as far as the signage goes, we've met with many of the stakeholders that we were introduced to through this process. Different people that put signs up, some of the attorneys and different people that are, again, that are involved in the, in this, in this industry. And we've gathered a lot of different information and we're putting that all together. What we'd like to do is move forward this conditional use discussion and the, and those first set of changes to the ordinance first, get that sort of on its way. And then as soon as that's sort of moving through the system and, and has been digested by both the planning commission and this group, then we'll, we'll bring the other one probably right in, right in behind that. So, so we think the discussion's going well and we're hoping to come up with some, I probably call them compromises, sort of on, on the changes that we're looking to suggest for the ordinance. Thanks. Okay, any other discussion of the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn our meeting and it's officially 7:37. Thank you. It's not quite 30 minutes, sorry about that.
No, it's no problem at all.
So John, where do you live? Okay. How long you been living in York? A long time. Okay. We, we should have a lot of York employees in this township, so.
I didn't want to take it because if somebody comes back here looking for it, but.
Yeah, Joe Robinson, you got it, John.
Nobody really comes, nobody really comes in here as, I'll just put it, I didn't know. Joe from B and B. Okay. Well, that's, if that's the case.
Hopefully we can keep him around for just a couple more years. He was supposed to retire this summer. I think he got convinced to hang around for two more years. So we're kind of hoping at this point.
John, do you remember Jack Corner Shoe Store?
Oh, yeah.
My brother.
Oh, you know what?
And he was in Spring and Sperry Township.